All right, I guess Larry wants to start, everybody.
Big effort.
Good evening, everybody. This is Monday, September 27th, 2021. We call the Prescott Regular City Council Meeting to order. Take a roll call. Here, Dar.
Here.
Marine?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Let's all stand and say a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody in the audience? I don't see anybody right now, not even our newspaper. Now it'll be time to step forward, state your name, and your address, and your comments. But since there is none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the regular city council meeting of September 13th, ordinance meeting of September 13th, personnel of September 9th, parks of September 20th, public library meeting minutes of July 29th, and the police commission meeting minutes for August 18th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on the motion?
I have a correction to make on the ordinance committee meeting minutes. I wasn't at that meeting, and I believe this is supposed to say that "us" and hints.
Oh, thank you.
I have shortcuts in my computer.
I don't know if I was...I didn't see my name at other ones.
All right, any other discussion of corrections? Not? All in favor of approving the consent agenda on six items? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Public Works. Open the public hearing for vacation discontinuance of portions of Lake Street, St. Curry Street, and Hilton Street right away as part of the Lake Street Assessor's Platte. Anybody?
Wanting to open the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Motion made second to open the public hearing for discontinuance of Lake Street, St. Curry Street, and Hilton Street right of ways. All right, who wants to present anything? Is there anything to present, or is it pretty simple, straight forward, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
And these are parts of the Assessor's Platte, and it's just portions for the houses where they sit and so forth, and that is it, correct?
Correct.
We're not totally vacating the whole right of way, or we are?
We're...let's just say like your house sits in a portion of it, we're just making a straight line, is what we're doing, so.
So we're not totally vacating those streets right of ways, just where the houses sit, and that's what I assume, I just want to be sure.
And I don't think we received any calls on this at all.
No, I haven't, so.
Well, it's been something we've talked about doing for the last two years, I think, right?
Yep.
Since we did that Assessor's Platte, yes.
Yeah.
All right, any other public comments? Any public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Second it.
Motion made second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we got Resolution 2123. I don't think we need to read the whole thing, but it's a resolution approving the vacation discontinuance of portions of Lake Street right away as part of the Lake Street Assessor's Platte.
Mick, the motion to approve Resolution 2321 and 2421.
I'll second it.
And 2521.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made second to approve Resolution 2321, that's the discontinuance of portions of Lake Street. 2421 is the discontinuance of portions of St. Curry Street as part of the Lake Street Assessor's Platte. And 25, again, I'm just gonna read it, is the resolution approving the vacation discontinuance of portions of Hilton Street right away as part of the Lake Street Assessor's Platte. All right, is there any discussion on the motions, well, the motion for those three resolutions? If hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is final pay request for Pearl Street to total excavating the amount of $3,548.26. And if I'm not mistaken, this is that 5% we normally hold back. And obviously, you see the corporates checked it out, and they've done all the checklists, so it's just paying them to close that out.
Make a motion to approve the final for Pearl Street in the amount of $3,548.26.
And do I do the final pay, Chris, since it's on the same letter?
Sure, and I'll make a motion to approve the final for Lake Street in the amount of $6,453.85.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the final pay request for Pearl Street, $35,482.26, and for Lake Street, $6,453.85 to total excavating. It's on Cedar Corp's letter dated September 21st. 21. Any other discussion on the motion? Not? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Finance, when's our budget meeting? Is that coming up here, right?
The sixth next.
October the 6th, 4:30?
Correct.
All right, you're gonna put that on your calendar, October 6th. And again, for the newer ones, Patrick, basically each department, it gets about 20 minutes to present their budget. And we don't sit there and go line items at any of the major changes or any major requests they have, just so you know. Okay? All right, parks and public properties, any meetings need to be called there?
We had two last week. We had the regular press meeting, and then we had open to the businesses, and the meeting went extremely well.
Good, good to hear. All right, so.
We have another one scheduled for October 20th, I believe?
Correct, yep.
All right, and that's at 6?
5.
5.
Yep.
October 20th at 5. Okay. Licensing, is there any reason we need to get together for licensing?
No.
All right, if not, ordinance, we got Resolution 2221. Does any certain public property designated recreational area pursuant to city ordinance 421-9? Does any recreational area? Do you want to hit the...who's this one, Dar, right? You want to just hit the high points with what we're?
Just what we're looking at is...
You know, this, this, this one, right? I was thinking of this one, and you can just state boom, 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 boom.
Oh, okay.
Nothing, we're down there on Lake Street, and?
Oh, this is...no, that isn't it. I think designated recreational, was this more going back to parks, though, Bailey?
Yeah.
Why don't you...do you want to take this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we adjusted the ordinance for park hours. We changed it from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. That's under 2...or 421-5 park hours. The additional adjustment that we made, which is under ordinance 0521, section 235-8, we took out the or under the immediate and direct control of the owner and his or her designated representative at all times. So dogs must be on a 15-foot leash, which is that extended leash, basically, so people can still have them on that long one. And that was pretty much it.
Okay, actually, I'm gonna switch back. I think you got Dar, you got mixed up.
Yes.
Resolution...I'll just read Resolution 2221 is designated recreational area where the city Prescott owns certain short lands on St. Curry River, forming with the Lake Street turnaround area more fully described as. City council has determined to designate the property as designated recreational area pursuant to 421-9 until all certain uses of special regulations, whereas the city desires that this area be for certain uses. Individual chose not to abide by these uses listed in the resolution may be asked to vacate the premise. Those who do not comply shall be charged with loitering pursuant to 435-8. Now therefore, upon motion duly made, seconded and passed by the majority of the city council, sets the following uses as permitted use for the property sets the following regulations, if any, are specific property. City terms that this area along St. Curry River may be used for recreational purposes limited to kayaking and canoe, non-motorized watercraft, including radio patrol boats. Dogs on leash not to exceed 15 feet. So Lake Street now is no longer swimming area and fishing area at this point, I assume, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
The kayak.
Yes, Marine?
Can we add, what do they call paddle boards to the kayaking and canoeing?
The non-motorized watercraft.
Oh, that's under there, then?
Yeah, because there's so many different options. You have kiteboards, you got so many different things, so it's hard to list all of them off.
Okay.
So approve this resolution, then turnaround on Lake Street will be designated for these uses only. And some of it, we used to allow, there are others to do that at this time. And that's just the beach area, it's not the whole riverfront? Because at one point, we talked about putting fishing gear there.
I think that's for future, so we wanted to talk about that for future, for right now, this is the current state.
Yep, okay, super.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 22-21.
Second.
Motion made second to approve Resolution 2221 designated recreation area down on Lake Street at the turnaround, around about turnaround, sorry. Any other discussion on the motion? Maybe why you two are here, but maybe not. All right, if not, all in favor of Resolution 2221, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now it's the...I don't know who wants to do the first reading.
Can I ask a question about this? When will the signs go up?
I know we're working on order...yeah, there's multiple.
Once we determine kind of the overall look of what we want to do with our signs at our parks, that's one of the things that we're working through, actually, with the riverfront project. We'll put together the signs and.
Probably by next spring.
Cedar Corp had some options.
Next spring, for sure.
Yeah, Cedar Corp had some ideas of what they've done in other towns locally, so we just need to look at the options, but we picked out pretty much all the accessories, I guess, for the riverfront benches, everything.
Good, cool.
Parts of it, so we just had...we haven't seen options for that, but once we get it.
Okay.
All right, thanks. So first reading, possible, or second, third reading, and approval ordinance 4-21, an ordinance to repeal and replace Cedar Ordinance 421-5 park hours. Now, I guess, if you're on the air.
Bailey, yeah, she basically covered it.
Yeah, sorry. I skipped over the resolution.
We're just changing from 5 to 6.
Yeah, 5 to 6. And then, yeah, it'll go till 10 o'clock at night, and then police chief or county council, they have the authority to open and close a park at any time in the interest of public safety if it's deemed necessary, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve city ordinance section 421-5 park hours.
Second.
The first reading, though.
It's gonna be the first. I think we'll do the first reading. We're not...okay, so.
Okay.
Motion made second to approve ordinance 4-21, the first reading. Any other discussion on the motion? Not? All in favor of the first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, who wants to do the next one?
I'll do this one. Basically, it's updating our ordinance stating that no cat, dog, or any other pets or farm animals should be permitted in any public playground, school, grounds, public park, beach, swimming area within the city of Prescott unless on a leash not to exceed 15 feet in length. Dogs, cats, and other pets are prohibited from being in the cemeteries. The owner shall pick up any litter caused by the animal. The owner should may not allow any animals to intimidate other persons on public grounds. Specifically trained service dogs shall be exempt from this section. Do we want to say ex...I was looking at this again, specifically trained and certified service dogs to ensure that they're certified as a service dog? I mean.
The certifications for service dogs are kind of...
I was just gonna say, I don't know if there's...I guess we could look into if there's one universal certification, but I guess.
Or documentation.
Yeah.
Maybe documentation would be a better...
I know that other people have run into that, where it's like these certifications that some of these people are getting are not legit, and their dogs are causing problems, so I think.
Because they're not really trained.
Yeah, I think we...there might be one, I don't know.
Most service dogs are on a leash.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't even know that we need to make that differentiation.
I don't know all the circumstances, because I don't own a service dog, so I'd rather just keep it there for now personally, because I don't know.
And so basically.
That's the first reading.
Yeah, and we're changing it from under the immediate and direct control of the owner to ensuring that they have a leash that doesn't exceed 15 feet.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made second to approve ordinance 05-21, ordinance repeal and replace the city ordinance 235-8 and all restriction on public grounds. Cemetery is the first reading. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Just, I guess, a question. What was the basis or decision or, I guess, motivation for this? Was there anything specific? Did we have an accident or a problem?
Lots of complaints.
Okay.
Lots of complaints.
And a few kids bit over the years.
Yes.
So what's someone's opinion of immediate...what is it, control?
Yeah.
Some people think they have control of their dogs, but probably don't, you know?
Especially when they come in contact with other dogs.
We have like a dog park, you know, where it's basically have that liability thing. We walk in, it's like you're walking into a dog park.
Do we have dog parks?
We do, but that's what I'm saying.
It'd be nice to happen.
Yeah. So right now, we don't have that option.
All right, any other discussion? Questions? Not? All in favor of the first reading of ordinance 0521, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is discussion of change highway commercial district C2. Change to the highway commercial district C2. Matt, I think you sent us something, so you want to just give a quick, brief overview?
Sure. So right now, all of our C2 district allows for C1 uses, and additionally, currently we have as permitted uses manufactured and mobile homes, vehicle equipment sales and services establishment, warehousing, wholesaling, storage establishments. Generally, for C2 and commercial districts, you want the flow of retail, again, with the idea that it provides daily activity that then attracts other businesses. For instance, you go to a restaurant, then you stop by the next store. If you go out to shop, go to the next store over. So the idea here is wholesaling and warehousing, again, usually doesn't provide a daily activity that brings people in and out, and we additionally allow those uses under I-1, I-2, and I-3, industrial uses for warehousing and wholesaling. So those would be removed from the C2 district, and additionally, then manufactured mobile home, vehicle and equipment sales and service establishments. There have been issues, and a lot of cities have issues, where sometimes they can start to look unruly or not as well upcap when you have vehicles outside that aren't being maintained. So it just allows us to make those special use permits that then allow us to put conditions on the use in terms of...there's a list here on page two of all the things that we are allowed to then control as part of their official approval in moving into the C2 district. So the process that we're looking at is we have a reading today. We would have it go before planning commission after October 4th meeting, and then we'd hold an October 11th public hearing before city council to make an official vote.
Yes, Marine?
Why are manufactured and mobile homes in this category?
That is something I'd have to look up, I'm not sure. I guess that's one of the things we talked about, was should we even allow it? Obviously, as a special use permit, moving it from a permitted use to a special use permit, we could deny that use still, and it does allow us that control.
I thought...oh, is it the sale of those?
The sale of them.
The sale of those, okay.
All right, any other questions for Matt? If not, we will take it to the planning commission first, and then we'll have a public hearing after the planning commission. If you have any questions or something pops up, feel free to call Matt, and he can do some research. All right, thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda is discussion of redistricting. And thanks, Jean, you want to present this, I assume, because it's more your election stuff, correct?
It is, so it's time for redistricting. And so the county has already set what their districts are going to be, so now it moves down to our level to create our wards. Working with the county, as you can see, what they want to do is they want to keep the amount in each ward pretty.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so they're kind of in the 900, close to the 900 range. But what this does then is it eliminates Ward 6. And talking a little bit with the county, one of the reasons they...we talked... Matt and I have talked about going to all at-large, all their persons, but they have supervisory districts at the county, and they really recommend it, not going with it. So I have called the league, but nobody's gotten back to me there to figure out. I've actually put...now make sure your terms are right, I think they all are. Your terms, what you currently serve, and if we looked at the redistricting, what ward you would be serving at this time. As we move forward, we'd have voting terms of at-large, so we'd have five ward persons and one at-large person. And starting in 2022, it'd be the at-large person and the ward one, and then just kind of moving through. We would continue with all six other persons currently representing what they were elected for, and then as the terms come up, that would be the time that we would make the changes, so.
So both Dar and I would be doing 3?
What's that?
Both Dar and I would be Ward 3.
Well, you would represent...you'd be at-large now until it comes up. But that's going to be the issue, is when Ward 3 comes up, you're gonna have to decide if you're gonna run for that ward and step out of that and get your three years into that position.
So I'm now in Ward 2, and we would have the same issue, because Tom doesn't run again until the year after I run, so.
Right, so if Tom would want to represent a Ward 2, he would have to run under Ward 2 in 2022 for his full three years.
Oh, in 2022, okay.
So in other words, if I didn't do that.
You would continue on?
In the year 2023, I would be essentially phased out.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're not gonna have any at-large, or only one?
One at-large.
Okay, so since I'm at-large, my terms up...my term's actually up.
2022.
2022, yeah.
Yep.
So then I'd be running for Ward 1.
Correct.
And how about Marine?
Or at-large, yeah.
Or at...or at-large.
Right.
And Marine would be either.
Ward 2 or at-large.
Or at-large.
Yeah.
Confusing.
It is confusing.
It is confusing, and that's always how it is.
I mean, we just did this like.
Every 10 years.
10 years ago.
Is that how long it's been?
That's been.
That's when we established 1 and 2, 3 and 4, 5 and 6, and 3 at-large.
Yep.
It's been that long?
It has been that long.
Been on here a lot of times.
Yeah, a little church, you.
Very shiny one, though.
Well, I kind of like having a few at-large rather than just one.
I know, but the way they break it up.
Yeah, we can't do it that way.
Right, they may...
I mean.
They're really changing election laws.
So it's not...you're kind of being forced to do this. You couldn't decide to make 1 and 2 one person, and 2 and...or 3 and 4 one person, and 5 and 6 one person, and then have 3 at-larges?
There isn't a 6 anymore, so you...one person would be serving one ward, and someone else would be...
Isn't this also based on how many residents, isn't it supposed to try to equalize?
So if you go to the page with the map on it, they've actually broken down. Look at the very bottom.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
One of the things that I do know that they're trying to do is they want to be able to serve... So let's just say we had St. Curry Bluffs, which was Ward 6, and St. Curry Bluffs probably has about 300 people in St. Curry Bluffs that would be voting. Well, they could all get through really fast in one day if we're voting. They want to be able to, when 8 o'clock comes, everybody's been able to have been served. That's why they want to make the wards really...so that they're all about the same amount of people in each ward, and that you're representing.
Who are they?
It's coming down from the state, it's working its way down. I'm going October 15th for more information, but the problem is, the county needs this by the 18th of October, so.
You mentioned the county frowns on the idea of having a bunch of at-large people.
Right.
But they...we are not necessarily beholden to that.
No, it just breaks down, as you can see, we are covered by three supervisor districts, and so it gets kind of hard, because some of them are being served.
Three county supervisor districts.
Yeah, some of them are not all being served by the Prescott School District, some are Ellsworth School Districts. When you look at the county as a whole, you know, so like... And then you split school districts, and you do a whole lot of different things with school boards and districts and all of that kind of stuff. So they would like to make it as least complicated as possible. Because when they're starting to make ballots, I mean, we can have six ballots, but somebody who has, let's just say, like Trenton, who is Ellsworth and Prescott and all of that, then two supervisor districts, you can have six or eight ballots for a small community like that. So it gets really tough with who's serving what, and they want to make it real clear. Now again, we will continue...I'll continue to call the league to see if we can look at that, if you guys...if we can do all at-large. Would you rather do an all at-large? It just comes time for voting again, depending on where you're at.
I think whatever makes it easier for the election, honestly.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, we... So basically, if we were to try to run the all-at-large thing that we have discussed, we run the risk of the supervisors nixing that.
I don't know that they can nix it, it's ours to do. I mean, it could get nixed at that level that's doing all of the election stuff work for the county and the state. There's a special board that is serving and doing that. They could nix it. But it would be the county board themselves, so.
So essentially, if we all wanted to stay on the city council, we probably wouldn't be able to do that. You're actually gonna phase...somebody sitting here is gonna get phased out.
Unless it's all at-large.
Unless it's all large. I'm just saying, if we go with the, you know, with their new ward.
We have 135 plus one at-large, that's 6, and there's 6 of us up there.
But.
Someone might not be in the district they need to be.
They need to live in the district, yeah.
Well, I truly do District 2, or it used to be District 3.
Bailey and Dar are in the same one.
Yeah.
Tom and Jean.
I would like to point out one of the downfalls of going all at-large, and that's that a cadre of people could.
A neighborhood.
Could take over the entire city. That is a legitimate concern.
Oh, that's true.
Yep, good point.
Just doing 3 and 3. Two districts and 3 at-large.
We couldn't opt to go back to our three districts and 3 at-large, or?
That's where we are now.
To...no, because we can't do the distribution.
Because we have five wards.
Yeah.
Change isn't always bad.
No.
And it will notify you as, you know, in December, when the stuff is coming up, we'll notify you whose ward is up and who is running and all of that, so that you'll have a chance to be able to decide if you want to go for that ward, or.
So I have until 2024, right? Yeah, okay.
I guess the question is, do you want us to look into doing an all-at-large, or are you saying, no, don't do that either?
I would have to agree that I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, like I say, your neighborhood could get all people on there, and your neighborhood could...
The whole point is to have diversity, and so I think that that's important.
You run the risk of people that have an agenda organizing and foisting that agenda on the entire city.
Yeah, I'll just make sure to get the majority of my parks done before then.
Well, if you do, you might show yourself a good seat.
Or get to the point of no return. I'll do the point of no return.
Okay, so I'm still in the dark here a little bit. So Marine is up this year.
Yes.
She's Ward 1 and 2. She gets reelected, she represents Ward 2.
She has to choose which ward she's going to.
If she's gonna do 1 or 2.
Or at-large.
I can represent Ward 1.
You can represent Ward 2.
Only Ward 2.
Right, or at-large.
Or at-large.
Yeah, correct.
And so then, she would be representing that until Tom's term is up.
The thing would be if...okay, so Marine is coming up, and she's actually Ward 1 right now. So if you're going to run, you represent 1 and 2, you would have to run for the at-large position.
Oh, that's my only option.
That is your only option, because you currently serve Ward...live in Ward 2.
And that's Rob's only option?
And that?
And then Rob would be serving Ward 1, so he would have to run as Ward 1. Or he could choose the at-large position and make a runoff. I mean, it's...there's a number of different things you can do. And then in 2023, Ward 2 comes up. If Marine doesn't win...no, that's not right, because she can't run for...she's only at-large, is what she can run for, so.
I thought you said I had to run for Ward 2 this.
Or at-large.
Or at-large, right?
Yeah, because Tom right now is...he's not up till 23, so you have to go for at-large, right? Is that how that works?
Correct.
No, no, because I already represent 1 and 2.
But you don't...you won't under the new redistricting.
Oh, so who's gonna be in Ward 2?
Tom.
Oh, Tom is, yeah.
Tom has to run for Ward 4.
Yeah, there's nobody in Ward 4. So that, you're right, there will be a change.
It's a cakewalk either way. It's an eventual cakewalk. Somebody isn't gonna have a chair.
It'll shake out, and that's what it goes.
Yeah.
Well, none of us live in Ward 4. Where's Ward 4?
Right where we're sitting.
Yeah.
There are houses available for sale there.
Yeah?
I think we just keep, do the 1, 2, 5, and then we'll have one at-large. And then, again, each year we'll find out what your shake is, as far as what you can run for. And it might be runoff between me and Tom, or Tom and, you know, whoever, that and Dar. Just depends on how it shakes out when it comes in. They'll let us know.
Yep, enough.
All right, just so you all know, I got 13 write-in votes. That's what you gotta beat to my.
Woo-hoo! All right, so then.
One more thing.
I'm still confused.
One more thing you mentioned, that you said that the county wanted to have something by the 18th, and there's a meeting by the 16th. Can you ask them to give you a few more days, and you go do what you need to get the information? Can we ask them to?
I don't.
We just do what we got here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think we're gonna get extra days. We're at the.
And you're gonna be comfortable with what you need?
Well, I need to be comfortable because I have to take and make this into a resolution to describe each one street by street by street. So it's.
No matter how you do it, you're gonna have that problem.
Oh, yeah.
Do you need a motion on this?
No, I just need you guys to.
Be aware.
Tell me how you want, if you want to move forward.
I think we're gonna move forward with five wards and one at-large. And as it shakes out, City Clerk will let us know, and then we all have to make our calls. Some must be happy if we don't end up getting it, because we have more free time. All right, that's all good?
I have one more.
Sure. And you know what? You're gonna have more questions after the meeting, too. I mean, you know, if something pops in later.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I can wait. I just wanted to know, so my only option is to run for at-large?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Unless you want to wait till 2023 and then run for Ward 2.
Yeah, okay.
Take a year off or something.
If I decide to run, I'm trying to get somebody else to run for instead of some conservative person. Yeah. I'm getting a socialist.
Yeah, socialist.
About the ballot.
Jane, I think we have, you know, we all agree with moving forward with what we have here, and Jane will work on it.
Best of luck, Jane.
Yeah, really.
Planning Commission is next, no, this is the date today.
Yeah, next Monday.
Next Monday, okay. Health and safety, bar closing. I see the chief gave us an update. I don't know if anyone wants to just go over it real quick, or.
Sure, I mean, I don't think you need to.
Who's the health and safety? Is that you, Patrick?
That's me, sir.
You wanna just read it real quick, what he said, just the update in downtown?
Sure. From Eric Michaels Police Chief, September 24th, disorderly conducts, boat drinks, subject removed from bar, cited in.
Just cited.
Sited, okay. Downtown subject beaten disorderly, but left the area, no action. Two Rivers, subject threw a stool because the Vikings lost.
Oh, no.
Was cited. Fights in progress. Two Rivers, subject was cut off and asked to leave, was arrested. Two Rivers, subject came from no name, were denied entry, tried entering boat drinks, denied again. Subject began assaulting security staff. Two subjects arrested.
Okay, so it's working. I think the bars are working together with the police. And I think, though, we still have a little disorderly, or you probably have a little of that, it's just not as bad.
Right.
All right.
Win, we can redo some of this stuff.
Yeah, there you go. Personnel, do we need a personnel meeting at this point? We're gonna wait for budget, budget meeting, tell us what personnel can do. Right, unless you have to.
Which comes, our budget meeting's gonna come before personnel, and we were going to discuss in personnel, new positions, weren't we?
Do you want to work with staff and decide where a personnel committee can meet, I suppose, and say, here's, here's something we need.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, but I mean, I felt like we did.
So, I mean, our last personnel committee, we went over the new positions that were being requested, and we were gonna propose at the budget meetings which one we're actually gonna be funded. So you don't need a meeting right now, okay?
No.
All right. Then we're to communication, new businesses. Any public comments from the council, or anyone in the audience, which there is nobody at this time? Any public comments?
I have one. So, well, maybe a couple comments. So there's a lot of confusion. I'm getting calls from my friends and family members around the confusion around the CDC and the FDA. I'm not coming to agreements on some things. So on September 17th, there was an eight-hour FDA hearing, which I listened to the entire thing. And so I just screenshotted some of the times, if anybody wants to listen, to some people I thought were really impactful that's not in the media and it's not being reported. One of them is Dr. Joseph Fryman. That's at 4 hours, 17 minutes, and 5 seconds. Yes, that's a long ways in. You have Professor Retsef Levi. That's at 4 hours, 13 minutes, and 47 seconds. He's from MIT. The next one is David Wiseman, PhD. He is a doctor that's also working on the front lines. His is at 4 hours, 24 minutes, and 9 seconds. And the one that I found most appealing was probably Steve Kirsch. He's the executive director of the COVID-19 Early Treatment Fund. He's at 4 hours, 20 minutes, and 13 seconds.
Tell him at City Hall, and so people can.
Yeah. I would highly encourage to do your own research before making that decision. And I'm not telling anybody to not get vaccinated or to get vaccinated. I just want to provide the information of what I found.
Super, thank you. Any other public comments? Not? I'm gonna move on to other business. Do we have any other business? Any council member like to bring, to make a decision on? Okay. I'm asking for consideration for zoning Board of Appeals, because I had this one open spot, and just can't seem to find someone that wants to take it. But David Olson happened to run to us, hey, we'd be interested in Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals is here as if you, you know, trying to go outside the code as far as setbacks and so forth. He's, yeah, signed me up. So I'm asking you to consider him if you have any questions, or he's supposed to get an app into us.
Yep.
And then at the next council meeting, we'll approve him unless you find a reason not to. Next item on the agenda, closed session pursuant to 1985-1E deliberating and negotiating.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion made, second, to go into closed session for 1985-1E. It's gonna be a roll call. Thomas?
Yes.
Robert?
Hi.
Dar?
Hi.
Patrick?
Hi.
Marine?
Hi.
Bailey?
Hi.
Motion carried. We will go into closed session. Few minutes, close the door, and then we will.
You're out of here.